The United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Last week, we had a member, a past member of the board, passed away, Leonard Harold Harbin. So we wanted to have a moment of silence for him. Thank you. At this time, it is our public input on agenda and on agenda items. I welcome any members of the audience to speak at this time. Okay. Mr. DeLobo for Cabinet?
Authentic accounts are reconciled. The general fund revenues and expenditures are remaining pretty steady. Purchase order orders have been turned off effective this week, so we can get ready for the fiscal year end processes and projections. Our tax season has officially ended and our files have been turned over to the city and the county to continue collection. And we should have the health service contracts to the board for signature soon. We're just waiting for a few more districts to verify students. And that is all I have to report this time. Questions?
Thank you. All right, Mr. DeLobo?
Evening.
Evening.
Mr. DeLobo, you bring on your crowd.
Yeah, really. I think the rest of the officiers got the memo on my slide. I don't know if I should have followed up on the link to my slide an hour after. I'm gonna get right to it. Thank you to Cabinet, Mr. Romano, District Office, and the board tonight for the opportunity and the time to showcase the high school. As I was putting together those slides, the reason there are so many is there are a lot of great things, it's really hard to narrow down, believe it or not, I have more, because we have so many students attached to so many different things happening in the school building, so sorry for the length. I believe it's, I've heard from a little bird that it's Mr. Mayo's birthday.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
What a place to spend this, huh?
Which is best for us.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go succinct, succinct as I possibly can through this, but again, wanna highlight a lot of great things happening at the high school. First and foremost, our vision, what we look to execute every single day in the high school, making sure that all students have a chance to be inspired, to achieve success, and all students are given support to achieve that success. So all is capitalized, all is bolded, underlined, because every student that walks through the door, that's what we're set out to do. I have to take a moment to recognize this group. Mr. Stack, Mr. Kinzari, Ms. Valeni, and Mr. Rico, they are incredibly solid, hardworking, driven, passionate, dedicated group of individuals. I couldn't have a better team alongside of me. There's a moment throughout the school day, for any Olympia reasons, when you go into their offices, they're not with students. They really grind it every day to better the lives and better the educational experience for our students, and I owe them a ton of credit. All right, our secretaries, you're probably wondering why are the secretaries on there? Anybody guess a fun fact about what these six women have in common? Our three guidance office secretaries, Maureen Hughes, Jordan Minor, Troy Valeni, and then the right, our two main office, Megan Hoffmeister and Kristy Perez, and then in the middle, my absolutely outstanding executive secretary, Abby Estebalas, but they all have a comment.
I know. Troy High grad.
Troy High grad, Troy alum, and always promoting album, proud Troy High graduate. This is a testament to the great things that happened inside of Troy High School and what a great place it really is, with them coming back to serve, just like many others do. All right, our commitments, two very direct, explicit commitments, reducing chronically absent students and strengthening our partnerships with our community. If we're doing the combination of those two things, we are going to better the outcomes for all of our students, so we're gonna continue to commit to these two things. If we're strengthening our communication and our students are in front of us, we are gonna help advance them to where we know they need to be. Our equity goal, this is a really, really positive thing, when the high school set this out, rolled this out a few years ago, would be an equity of racially diverse students in the upper level and honor level courses. The numbers were a lot lower then, and by intentionally and explicitly focusing on this goal through a twofold process, with the recommendations, working together with the admin team, with the curriculum leaders, and in departments and councils, and identifying the students to raise up, and then also giving them the supports that we do, you can see there's a litany of supports there, both classroom support, mentor support, students, we have increased those numbers. So our courses range, you can see the numbers there, anywhere from 11% all the way upwards of 86%, racially diverse in our upper level courses. We don't have any more courses at 0%. We are either exceeding or beating the goal. We certainly have some areas to continue to work on, which we'll continue to do, but this proves if you adopt a goal, and you work toward it, and you're intentional about it, and put systems in place, that you can significantly achieve that goal. Here's our results, I won't go through them all, the really good thing about our region's result, because they're really only one snapshot on one given day, and the students also have additional opportunities to take exams if they don't do so well on the first time. You can see the first handful of exams there, we did see a jump from last year, which is really, really great news. That means the work that we began at the end of last year, really honing in, looking at curriculum decisions, looking at instructional decisions that go directly with these exams for our courses, we saw an increase. We continue that work this year, working with curriculum leaders in our departments where we expect to see continued growth to get us back to that first column of pre-candid passing percentages. The algebra exam, the first exam you see there, I had the principal, Amsterdam Average Altitude, I know him very well, Blake Janey, he's a great guy, he called me to ask, why are, why is, and 67%, I wanna be at the 81% back to pre-candid, but he called to say, why is your number so much higher than ours? Being in the math department, as a math teacher years ago, I was able to speak to a lot of the things, he, along with a handful of teachers, are actually coming to our buildings, I think tomorrow, if not Thursday, to observe our math classrooms, speak with our math teachers to gain insight into what we're doing that can support them. We, there's a volunteer basis, we allow our teachers to decide whether or not they wanted to do it, and a lot of our teachers are willing to help, so they're coming, which is really, really great. Our graduation rate last year, 85%, so we've remained the same from the year before. When you look at the eight-year snapshot, we remain at 85% or higher, we are working tirelessly, we've honed in on the senior class, we're looking at students individually to identify what supports they do to get that score or that number back up. We optimistically anticipate it to go up this school year. So that's our graduation rate for eight years. This is just a quick comparison to the overall state and then six inner-city schools around us. Again, just another small variable in the larger equation of the kids going through our four years, but it is something we look at comparatively to understand where we are. All the way to the right, the 86% statewide average, they also remain flat at the same number. So statewide average remained at 86, they were 86 the year before, we were 85, we remained at 85. Those other inner cities around us, four out of the six you see all decreased, anywhere from 2% up to 8%, and then two of them increased. Really, there's no rhyme or reason, if you have a really diagram, there's some deep information to understand that, but it gives us a snapshot where we stand comparatively. Okay. Yonder, I felt absolutely compelled to talk about this tonight, because it was a year ago that Mr. Romano presented to you, presented to your community, about rolling this out. As we had conversations, I just kept, continued to say, it was our responsibility to put students in positions to be successful, and the only way to do that was take away their phones. And, you know, a year later, I am incredibly proud to stand here and tell you that, that's exactly what we have done. That picture right there is from a year ago. Three kids into their phones, not looking, not talking, they're into their phones. I was at the dinner at a very nice restaurant last week, open air, it's beautiful out, a family of six, four kids, two adults, all on tablets or phone, the entire dinner. And it's, it's hard to see that, because they're just lighting, lighting lights passing by, and it's just not good. We have changed at Troy High School, and again, I couldn't be prouder. You know how they say a picture is worth a thousand words? That right there is, that's what you see now when you're in our cafeterias and you're around our students. The joy, the smiles, the happiness, the positivity, even if you go in the background and you see the kids in the back, they're talking to each other, their heads are up, they're interacting, that's what you see when you're in the hallways and in the cafeterias, and just again, smiles and the joy that our kids are now displaying comparative to when they had their phones and they were moved to them. Here's another picture, you can see the headphones, the headphones in their ears, and then the phones in their hands, sitting there at the table together, and now this is what you see. Groups of kids packed in, standing, sharing, talking, communicating with each other, those are the images we now see. This is students waiting for their gym class. As you can see, there's probably about five or six of them on their phones, just looking down, not talking to each other as their teacher's taking attendance, and now when you go into a classroom, that's what you see, you see all their heads up, attentive, focused, paying attention to what's happening around them, it really is night and day. That's what our hallways used to look like before school and during transition. Kids come out of classes, they were, as soon as they came out, on their phones or they're standing at their locker. This is now what you see. Every student's head is up, students are engaged, they're talking to each other, they're congregating, they're having genuinely positive discussions amongst each other. The second I turned to step back to take that picture, the girls in that group saw what I was doing, they don't get to do that anymore in school, so they immediately turned to get into the picture, and you can see how happy they are, just standing there, talking, conversating, enjoying each other's company, which was not, it happened here and there, but it was not happening to the degree that it is. Our hallways are loud, they genuinely just conversation, talk with each other. Kids are being kids again, and it's really, really been transformational, which is exactly the word I have up there. It's absolutely transformed Troy High School to such a better degree because of these reasons right here. Our classrooms are more engaged, our students are interacting, they're talking, they're raising their hand, they're participating, they're sharing out, they're not shy to interact. Behaviorally, we're seeing, we've seen a significant decrease in social media and cell phone related incidences. If you remember last year, Mr. Romano mentioned to you how he asked the admin team, what's the percentage of your day that's consumed by major instructions from cell phones or social media? And the answer across the board was 90%. I asked my team this year, and the answer was completely flipped, we flipped a bit, and it was 10%. Literally, and that might even be a high number, if last year was nine out of 10 incidences, this year it might be one, that's because it came in from outside the building for something that, that happened where the kids, for whatever reason. But also, in dealing with those incidences, it's much easier to handle now. It's much easier, because they weren't able to go all day, back and forth, back and forth, on all these platforms that you and I, I have no idea what they are, so they haven't had that opportunity, so it's much easier to resolve amongst them. So we've received significant decreases in our referrals and in our suspensions, again, night and day, transformational. And one of the biggest pieces is the social emotional status of our students. Again, I can't stress how much face-to-face interaction they have, how much they're talking the hallways, how loud our hallways are, our cafeterias are, the students are engaging and talking and interacting with each other. They're building their social connections and their skills amongst each other, again, skills that, again, walking out and not ever talking with somebody, you're just lacking those skills. I put up there, less tension, there's just a vibe, a feel of tension when students were just err with their phone. That's born, because they're not getting their notifications, they're not waiting for the next thing, or they're not dealing with something where they have an issue with somebody, so it's really just overall created incredibly positive school culture socially amongst them. Here's what they say, I'm gonna read through these, I guess I'll skip through some of them, but I asked them, I just kinda kept it vague, and I said, you know, without your phone, how are things been, what do you think? And I kept it that vague, so I could just kinda, this is all what they said to me verbatim. You know, they're engaged more with their friends, they're willing to share in class, their urge to pick up their phone is gone, they're more focused on what is going on. Now they're forced to speak up, they're less shy, they're not on edge, they're raising their hands, and they're not afraid to interact. Last year, people just walked up with their head down in the hall, in the hallway, now you can actually see them interact. That's from our students, they recognize it, they feel it, we see it, we feel it, it's really, really, again, transformational, what this tool, we call it a tool, what the tool of yonder has done for us in our building. It's not perfect, we have students that have challenged us, of course, we would expect that, our kids are brilliant, they've put it in their shoe, they've put it in their Yeti Stanley Cup. They try everything, but we've got a really solid team, so, and the kids are great, they get calls, they're really great, and we address all of it. I won't, here's just, again, we say yonder is a tool, it's a support, here's additional supports that we provide at the building, I won't go through all of it, the two things I highlight here, that's the second one, the stronger connections, you heard all the other principals talk about it this year, that has been incredibly impactful in the school building, we have over 140 students that are attached to a faculty member of the building, that giving them direct support, direct mentorship, direct academic support throughout the school year. Huge thank you to Julie Curd for getting us that grant, it's been very helpful, and then the one, two, fourth one down, freshman literacy. I talked to Dr. Watson about this at the end of last year, this idea, we needed to create a course at the freshman level that kinda went back to the basics of targeted literacy instruction, providing honed-in instruction to students on the basic concepts of literacy, phonics, phoneme awareness, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, just identifying those areas for students and providing them small group instruction and targeted instruction. And we've seen a lot of progress this far. We have also heard from the elementary principals about the iReady program, that has also been another tool for individualized instruction, progress modeling, providing data and feedback where students stand, and then giving them targeted and individualized support. We're gonna roll that out into that course at the end of this year and into next year to really track how we're doing there. So really, really great support that we're providing our students to just continue to increase their success. Journalism, I won't speak too much on this, just because you're all very familiar with this, this program has been absolutely incredible in high school, it has really, you can see it, Kevin Bowe there, created a positive and inclusive culture in Troy High School. Everyone is so familiar with what goes on with this program, it's gaining more and more traction every year, and the students just enjoy themselves when they're interacting, they're respectful, they're polite, and they interact in such positive ways, and they come up with some really, really creative ideas to capture new stories. You can see that, all the pictures on the bottom, those are from the journalism club. Those students are smiling, they're happy, they're enjoying themselves, they're working hard with their teacher, it's just a really, really great program that continues to expand. The bottom note there, journalism two, or journal two and communication, we're pending right now at Hudson Valley, that'll be a college-level course for next year, that'll continue to expand this. Regeneron, this is a huge program for us, incredible partnership that we have with them, we're the only high school that's been afforded this opportunity with them, they're a really, really great company. We have four cohorts of kids, nine through 12, anywhere from 16 kids in the cohort up to 25, that participate, participate in this every week after school on Tuesdays, project-based and online learning that they are doing with mentors, and then going on site visits to Regeneron and other institutions and businesses throughout the academy and throughout the school year, where they're gaining exposure, which you're gonna hear me talk about a little bit, of real-world practical careers. The really great thing about this, Regeneron doesn't want to just call off when our seniors graduate, they wanna continue working with them as they go through college. So Regeneron is going to keep in touch with them, so that they can continue to provide them support for tuition, books, supplies. At the end of this year, the kids just found out their gift of the program at the end of the year, Regeneron's gonna buy them either a Windows laptop or MacBook as a gift, kids are incredibly excited, they just found out, and not only are they gonna do that, but they're also willing to purchase any programming that the kids need for their particular majors to put on those PCs. It's really incredible what they're doing, it really is awesome. And then they'll continue to keep that connection, where if the students so choose to partake in internship or gain an entry-level position, they have a leg up with this company. So really, really great partnership we have here. Smart Scholars Programming, I think you've heard us talk about this in the past, this is the fourth year of this program, we have four cohorts, nine through 12, 25 kids at each grade level, 100 total students this school year. This program affords students the opportunity to take up to 31 Hudson Valley credits, paid for in full, they don't pay a penny, they gradually take college courses, and eventually you take them on Hudson Valley's campus as their junior teachers. This year, we have students being bused, they do part of their day at Troy High, part of their day at Hudson Valley, and they're sitting on Hudson Valley's campus in college courses with college professors, taking classes. It's a really, really neat program, it continues to get better every year, we have two pathways currently, and we're working on getting two more approved for next year, which will ultimately expand the program even more for more interest and more college credit offering in our building. So really, really neat. Career Discovery, this is another great program. Rose Gorman oversees this, she's a social teacher at the high school, site and so she teaches and she oversees this program. This program last year had 23 students in it, and I said to Rose at the end of the year, why do we have more, and she agreed. I said, we've gotta double it, we didn't quite double the number, this year we have 37, but we are gonna double that number, we're gonna continue to increase and get more and more kids involved in this program. The really neat thing about this, you can see the list of organizations that we partner with on the right-hand side there, I won't read them, but there's a list of organizations that we have direct partnerships where our students have in-the-field mentors, where they meet with regularly, they gain practical advice, hands-on experience with people in the field. You can see the areas of study below there on the left, where you can see the variety of different fields that kids are interested in, and this is what our students are doing throughout the school year. Another great thing about this, this particular year, we added it as a college-level course. So we're gonna continue to figure out ways to add additional courses, which we already offer, so we were able to do that this year, so this is gonna continue to just increase and strengthen as years go on. I put college career ready up there, because these continue to be the offerings, we currently offer 19 college courses and seven AP courses at the high school, so kids can graduate, and they do, with a great deal of college-level courses, and with those pending that I just spoke about, it's only gonna continue to increase. The bottom left there are our current New Vision programs, you see where our kids are participating in college-level, college project-based learning, and then on the right-hand side, you see all the Quest Star programs that they offer. Now, the really neat thing about what you see on that slide there, is our students participate every single one of those programs, so it's not just a list of offerings at Quest Star or New Vision, those are programs that we have students involved in right now as we speak. So it's really, really neat, because you can see the variety of different offerings that our students are gaining experience in. Just more additional opportunities that we have brought into the building, these are just really, really neat experiences, so didn't wanna leave this off. Over to the left, a famous cartoonist came in to speak, he spent a few days with our art department, entered different classes, did some different projects with kids, gained them some insight into his experience. The guy you see in the middle, Rick Mistracchio, astronaut, he actually had quite a bit more experience than what I have listed there, but you can see he was in space for over 227 days. He came in, spoke to a whole bunch of kids, we were able to identify the kids that were interested in that based on the College and Career Naviance survey, interest surveys that we do at the beginning of the year, so we were able to pull those kids in. We have a senior that after she left that presentation, she's majoring in next year, environmental engineering, and after this presentation, she went down to her counselor and said she's gonna change to aerospace. So you never know, one of these opportunities or experiences are gonna ignite something for a student and really get them in the pathway and their niche for their career. Over here to the right, Glenn Mayer, New York State Labor Union, he did a great job for those students that are sitting, you see sitting there, you can see how attentive they are, and he went through A to Z with apprenticeships and opportunities that are out there, and you can see what he told the kids at the bottom, work hard, show up on time, and get along with your colleagues, and you will be successful. I mostly agree with him. A little bit more, but that's the start.
Two seniors got offered positions pending graduation.
For apprenticeships, right? Is that back here in the Quest Star program?
No, that was just from that presentation, them applying.
Oh, from applying from that.
And then graduating and doing what they, which they will, and getting their driver's license, they're gonna be offered apprenticeship, entry-level positions in the labor union, so.
So, and you're gonna see some more, but when you talk about being college and career ready, you can see all the opportunities that we're striving to provide our kids every day. Here's some more exposure to college and career-ready stuff, this Faces of Medicine Albany Medical Center was a really neat opportunity for a handful of our kids that were willing to go and participated to the Saturdays of March, they had to give up their Saturdays to go, they did some really, really neat things in this program, you can see what I have there, it was hands-on simulated medical procedures that they were able to conduct. They dissected a cow's eyeball, which is odd, but they did, and I think what you've seen in those images is them dissecting a squid. So they were able to get this hands-on real experience, which is really neat, that an opportunity to meet and engage with several different professionals, medical doctors, CTOs that came in and presented to them and engaged with them, so it was a really neat opportunity, they did some really great stuff there. I don't have pictures of it, but our RPI STEM program, we have students participating where they are conducting, as we speak, on Saturdays throughout the entire school year, paid research-based research, so, and they're getting paid a stipend to do it through RPI, so it's really, really neat, they're gonna present their findings in June at a symposium, which is really cool, and then on the bottom you see there, our kids have the opportunity to go on a field trip to Amazon, you can see how happy they are, they had a really great time, they came back and said a lot of positive things, as they walked through the building with their vest on, we all asked for their favorite, wow, the graphic, they didn't like that, but they got some hands-on, just literal experience with people in the workforce. How does Amazon work, what are the logistics behind it, what are the entry-level and upper level positions that you can gain by working there? They really came back with some really great stuff from that company. Some of this we've already talked about, so I won't go through it too in depth, but again, just experiences that our kids are doing outside of the school building, not just, you know, going to an 815 and 315 school day, they're out there experiencing, they got firsthand experience, I see what politics was like when they went to the governor for 28 minutes. So they had, they had a lot of questions after that, which were great. Over to the top right, you see a group of our students at the Capitol, that's the million-dollar staircase, where they lobby bills that were backed for greener schools and greener environment. They were in conjunction with $700 students throughout the state, so that was a pretty neat experience. The girls on the bottom there, they did a leadership conference with student councils throughout the Capitol region with several other suburban schools, they came back thrilled with different ideas to just build a different culture, bring a different culture to the tri-school. When they came back, they came straight to my office, and the first idea they had was doing a spring pep rally. We do a fall, we do a winter, we've never done a spring, so this year we're doing our first spring pep rally to bring out the spring sports team and kind of conclude the school year with a pep rally, and they've organized all of it. So they're really, really excited about that, some people might have a pie in the face, I hear that's an activity, but it will certainly not be made, but I hear that's on the, on the stage. I actually think, if I remember, I think what they said is all four of them are up, and the students are gonna vote for two. It's gonna be interesting. This Thursday night period in the gym, it's gonna be fun. There we go. Raise some money. Last one is the Seattle Youth Leadership Conference, this is a great conference, our, again, our students go to these conferences, and they participate, they speak up, they advocate, and they come back with some really genuinely great ideas, and you can see what that was about there, students are just, again, just out there experiencing some really, really great stuff. I probably could do an entire presentation on performing arts at arts, these guys, some of this we've seen on the website, or have just, we've talked about it, are performing arts, you can see the list there, and I don't think I have everything, they continue to participate in every possible performance that they can get outside of our home school district. The, that's the Albany concourse they're performing, and then the top right is when we were at the Board of Regents State Ed Building back in December, so our kids are performing and doing an excellent job, they continue to increase their participation throughout the Capitol region, and then the art exhibitions, I feel like almost every week or every other week, our art program, programming is putting out another, yet another thing that they are doing, they are accomplishing, it's actually incredible, our students are participating in regional statewide events where they're doing exhibitions, they're doing galleries, and they're just showcasing their talent, it's actually incredible, you can see there, out of 526 pieces that were submitted to the Albany Center Gallery, they selected 138. Out of those 138, seven of them are from our students, so it's really, really neat. And then out of those 138, the final products were 18, and out of those 18, one of our students was selected, so really, really cool opportunities for our students. There, you see at the bottom, that's a Troy Farmers Market down at the atrium, if you're down there on Saturdays, that artwork you see there is designed by one of our seniors and painted by our art club and art students and our art teachers, they did a really phenomenal job with us. So this is my favorite part, we talked about student athletes, but the truth is, everything I just went through, all those programs, all those offerings, those are all students in those programs, those are our students partaking in experiences. Last time when I presented, last April, I think I was eight days in back at the high school, I finished by saying, experiences, exposure is an opportunity, and that's what we really try to showcase here tonight, is all the experiences our students are getting, the exposure that they're getting in college and career, the trades ready, and the opportunities that we're striving to provide them. So it's everything I just discussed, and then here's a handful of different specific accolades for students. Finn Franhofer, Finn, Finn Franhofer, okay, that sounds fast. He was the second student to fly that plane, so back in, I think it was November, there was a student, she made the news, I think her name was Ava, she was the first student to fly in the aviation Hudson program, flies solo flight. He then flew his first solo flight two days later, so she got the news story, he didn't, but it's not about that, he did, he did a great job. This kid, that week that he did, I think he got his driver's license the same week, but he's flying a plane, and he's accomplishing a lot, I actually have a video of him landing his plane, and it's actually super, super I actually have a video of him landing his plane, and it's actually super, super cool. So that's a great thing we're offering our kids. And then you can see the Quest Star stuff. Our kids participate with their hands-on practical competitions where they have to demonstrate their talent, demonstrate their learning, and project-based stuff. This student here is Chad Castle, you see there, the HVAC third place. I have no idea what any of those tools are. And he's just absolutely killing it in the program. And then this week, as we speak this week, we have several students participating out in Syracuse at the culinary statewide competition. So we're eager to see those results. So again, it's a lot of great, great things our kids are doing. Some more student athletes, Avielle Medd, she has a full ride to MIT's full scholarship, and she's going for chemical biology. I have no idea what that even entails. Sarita Theagorajan, she has a half ride to Cornell studying computer science. Dimitrios Skordos, six-week MIT summer program is pending, but we believe, based on what he submitted, he's going to get in. Avielle actually did that program last summer, National Merit Scholarship. Look at those numbers. PSAT scores, national database, one-point-three-million entrants, and we have two students that have qualified among fifty thousand, which was among the one-point-three-million. So really, really talented group of kids we have, Dimitrios and Madeline. So we're eager to figure out, find out those final results. They should be out this coming month, later this month or early next month. And then our EOP, we're waiting on those. For some reason, a lot of these results, last year this time, they had a result. Some things are still pending, but those two students you see there, Trinity and X, pending EOP for those two schools. Here's just a handful of different things. Izzy Strong, Youth Leadership Award. She's a tenth grader who's an absolute leader in our school building. You're going to hear her name a lot the next couple of years. Some of the things I discussed, she's already participating in them, so we expect high things from her over the next couple of years. Alyssa Baker is a student I mentioned earlier that designed that atrium mural. She's the one who designed it and helped paint it. Hannah Guinep is a student I mentioned received that one award out of those five-hundred-and-twenty-six. And in addition to that, she also received the five-hundred-dollar Conley Art League Scholarship Award. Maddie Vanita is nominated for Society of Women's Engineers Scholarship, which is a huge national organization, which is really cool. So we're waiting on that result. And then Angelina McLeod, she went to States for swimming. She's absolutely killing it. She's only a sophomore. Again, other than you'll probably hear for the next couple of years, killing it with different records. I won't go through these, but I think it's important to note our fall teams and our winter teams, that are student athlete, scholar-athlete teams. Our students are doing the right thing in the classroom, they're doing the right thing on the field, and they're recognized for it. You can see the list of kids there with all the different, either honorable mentions, first-team awards, second-team awards in the colonial council. I probably missed some. We have students getting recognized for their accomplishments. Lydia Ashline, one of the last ones you see there, she was just recently recognized, featured in a Sports Illustrated High School section for top infielders in the state. Jason Glass sent us, I went in, you can, there was, I don't know, fifteen-ish students on there, and clicked vote. And at the time, there weren't really many people voting. I think we just looked at it today. She had like sixteen-hundred votes. The first person that got it had like thirteen-thousand. So who only knows where in the state that student is. But it's just a really cool thing that she was featured in that article. Great kid, hard worker. And then at the bottom there, you see the football team, received first place at the top form, Club Elisa Lifkov. I actually pulled out my phone and I zoomed in, and I asked the kids when they were showing me this, I said, "Guys, look at two thousand and four, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, look who won in Detroit High School those years." And I said, "You know who was in school then?" And I think they got the hint. Really, really cool stuff, and they're killing it right now. They're really, they're really doing a great job, both in the building and outside the building. We're narrowing it down here. These two students you see up there participated, Mr. O'Keefe, Jack O'Keefe, does a great job in the business program. Courses that he teaches pushing students to excel from this programming every year. Our kids always are getting first, second, or third place. They do a great job. Those two seniors you see, one at a hundred-five teams in the Capitol region, they did an outstanding job. They actually qualified for states, but because they can't make it to states the week that it is, they won't be participating. But they did a great job. And then our masterminds team, what in bold, masterminds? Our masterminds team is always outstanding. You can see there the two. That's Dimitrios Skordos, whose name you've heard a couple of times, and that's Jerry Zal. Dimitrios is the leader in the state. This team continues to be undefeated. They continue to do a great job, and they are going to Nationals in Atlanta over Memorial Day weekend. So really, really great stuff they're doing. I wanted to close with this because this comment, this message really resonated with me. When the students came here, seniors to advocate for graduation to be back on the field, I think there was five of them, they wanted, and everything they articulated that they came up with. We didn't, we guided them, but they're the ones that say what they say, they're the ones that come up with what they come up with. Nora Melo is a senior, she's a great kid, she's involved in a lot. She said this, "Something that Troy High has taught us is to always advocate for ourselves and others." Now, having bold there, advocate for ourselves and others on something that we collectively feel strongly about. And it resonated with me so much because this is a testament to the character of our students that walk through the high school hallways. This is a testament to the students that we raise through the school district with all the support of everything that happens in the school district, that right there. And those are the students that we produce, students that advocate for themselves and students that advocate for each other. They stand up for themselves, they stand up for each other, they say what's right, they do what's right. And that right there, again, I'll say it more time, is a testament to the character of the students walking the halls and graduating from high school. We can, we will. End of story.
Josh, do you have any questions?
Josh, just a question for me. On the college and career-ready exposure stuff, how were parents and guardians notice that? Do you feel like there's enough students that are partaking in that? Is it mandatory? How is the awareness getting out? How do we get more students involved if they're not?
So, well, typically send out parent swear messages, which is just a notice flash where they get informed about what's going on. And then anything like that that happens, we call the kids down, we give them information, and we have them bring it home. So it's really a two-fold process. We try to send it out, parent swear what's going on, and then any kids that are interested in it, or any kids that are, that we think would be participating in it. But some of the programs we saw up there, like the CD, for example, we go into classrooms and we present what we're going to offer them, what they have the opportunity to do, and then we explain it all, and then it's on them to go home, bring it home, and say, "Here we go, this is what's worth it, it's offered to us." And then again, we follow up and try to parent swear it out so that it is communicated. We have different information, like there's a handful thing that I talked about, we try to present those things with families that are in, that they're familiar with what we're offering.
Great job, Mr. Monk. So we, tonight we've come to the end of a difficult, but kind of a little bit confusing budget process. But we had to come to that, so we had to make some choices, even though we don't have all the information yet. You'll see as we go along. So the first few slides are just repeats, I'll go through them quickly. This one I always read, "The choice of the school district will provide a strong educational social foundation to graduate all students college and career-ready." Just heard Mr. Monk's presentation of all the great ways we're getting that done. And as we make our budget, we want to make sure that we're keeping that at the forefront of our. Those are all things, and Josh did a better job of doing all the specific things at the high school that we're proud of. Great passion, great energy, you know, I love how much you love the school. But all the principles are like that, and you've heard, you've heard all of their presentations throughout the last five, six months. Those are some of the highlights, but certainly more than just that. So we've been trying to build on our successes. We're trying to make sure we're always being in the needs of all of our students. We always are about continuous improvement, however good the stuff is, we always are trying to get better, and we're trying to do it in the most fiscally responsible way and responsible. Those are the two lenses that we're looking through on the education sound, so that mission and vision are happening, we're fiscally responsible for the scores of the taxpayers. So in draft two slide, we left off with that, right? So the governor put her executive proposal out in January. She gave a two percent minimum increase to all districts. That's where we were, we weren't happy with that, we did a lot of advocating. Selman McDonald was here, we've talked to him regularly, continue to talk to him regularly, just talked, actually got an email from him today. The Senate, Assembly both added to the governor's two percent. So we were counting on some movement from that, and then some other things that happened there with the foundation aid, and then this is Kerry's creation. They didn't agree, right? So the state budget's supposed to be done April first. There have been times when it's April third, April fourth, even seventh or eighth. And Mr. O'Toole and I were looking today, really, the last time we had to approve a school budget without knowing the foundation aid and the aid numbers from the state was two thousand and four, we said, right? Five.
Yes, two thousand and ten, it was very late when we had.
We had the runs, right? So two thousand and ten, it was, it was in August that it wasn't approved to, but they had given us the educational runs to make our decisions. So going back to oh-four, oh-five, Governor Pataki, right, he said at that point, was the last time where we really are just, I mean, we're not guessing because we have the executive proposal, but almost always over the last twenty years, that number has been moved up once the final budget is decided between the Assembly, the State Senate, and the governor. So it's not a great position to be in. And so there was a little bit of, you know, guessing involved. Remember when we were here, going through draft two, we had a gap of about two-point-eight billion. We were talking about some reserve usage, we were talking about a tax levy increase, a moderate one, and then we were talking about hopefully getting about six-hundred-thousand more in the final state budget. So we have some corrections that we have to do because of where we stand. So I think last time, and I put it in the email, I think we were really settling in on one-point-seven-five. I think it's a good number. We originally started this, you know, the original draft had zero in there, but we were thinking two. Our gap is two-five-seven, but after, I think Tom was the one that originally brought it up, I think there is some benefit to being under two. And so I think one-seven-five's a nice number. It gives us an extra six-hundred-and-sixty-some-odd-thousand in revenues, which is a good thing, obviously. It's a moderate increase for our taxpayers. I mean, remember the last four years, we've been zero, so I hope at one-point-seven-five, with our history, you know, that's something that's powerful for all the taxpayers. It only accounts to a little over five dollars per month. So I think when we put it in those terms, I think, hopefully, you'll know better than me, but hopefully that's something I will be able to sell. That's the little history of our tax cap, right? So again, there's the last four years at zeros. And then the other thing that I always say is, the last nine years, it's a total of less than five percent increase over those last nine years. So we're talking about a half a percent a year average from two thousand and sixteen, seventeen on through today. So if we're at the one-seven-five, again, that helps close the gap a little bit. That was our draft one, just kind of going through. At that time, we had a four-point-one-million-dollar gap. Then we had some changes. Those were the positions that cabinets and the administration, I looked through. Remember, at that time, we were saying that we're still planning and hoping for no layoffs due to the budget. We had identified about eight elementary positions, two special eds that were unfilled, still are unfilled now, so we're going to cut those through attrition. One instructional coach who left recently, we'll keep that unfilled. Three social workers that were able to switch our funding source to one of our special ed grants. So that savings at that time was a little less than one-point-three-million. And I think everyone knows by now, the attrition plan that we'll put in place will be a fairly strict one. I mean, there will be positions that we have to fill. I think I've used some examples before. We only have one physics teacher, and the physics teacher decides to leave, we will hire a new physics teacher. But every position that happens, if somebody retires or resigns or leaves for whatever reason, we will review them all to make sure it's something that we definitely need to replace. And certainly at the elementary level, as people leave, those will be positions that we do have some room and will not be replacing.
Josh.
Yes.
Go back to, the three social workers, you're saying reduction, but you don't.
It's not really a reduction, it's a savings. Yeah, it's really a savings. We're not reducing three social workers, we're taking three social workers out of the general fund and paying them through Doc Fitz's IDA grant. She had some carryover money for at least one year. That's not a permanent solution, right? But we had some extra money in that grant this year, so that'll get us through one year and then we'll have to look at it again at next year's budget development. So that led us to this, which was draft two. Our deficit was down to about two-point-eight. Again, that was a savings of one-point-two-seven-six, so it was about two-point-eight-million, right? And so at that time, we were pretty comfortable that with reserves, we talked about one to one-and-a-half-million, we talked about a tax levy, which we just agreed on, and then we talked about the new state revenues coming once that final state. Those three things together would have given us the two-point-eight, we assumed, and then we would have been done. When the state doesn't come in, now we got to come up with another revenue source, right? We talked about the reserves pretty extensively. Remember, reserves are one-time revenues that you don't typically want to pay recurring costs with, right? And so we talked about a number we were comfortable with, especially with the attrition plan. The only way one-time revenues work to pay for recurring expenses is if your expenses are going to eventually go down. So we're comfortable next year that we can make enough cuts throughout the year that we can make up for that amount. And when Adam De novo was giving his report, we froze spending, give me the date.
Good Friday?
Good Friday. So that's not the date, but April. So that allows us to start taking a lot of free spending. That doesn't mean we can't still get stuff, we have to cover the money and really plan ahead for it. And so it really helps the business office plan for what's left. And so in doing that and getting a good luck ahead, again, I've talked about Adam and his department before, I mean, they're really great at what they do. And so we're going to be able to make up those revenues with the last thing on that slide, which will add an additional six-hundred-thousand in appropriated fund balances. Very similar to reserves, appropriated fund balance, again, is one-time revenue. So you don't really want to spend a lot, it's like using your savings account and your own personal money to, you know, pay your car payment. Eventually, you run out of money, right? That's not good fiscal practice. But in times where, you know, things we're in right now, sometimes you don't have any choice. And it works if those bottom two numbers now, one-point-five-million in reserves and an additional six-hundred-thousand appropriated fund balances, we have to make it more that we're doing a good job keeping track of expenses next year, and through our attrition plan, we'll get some of that back. We also could get some of that back right away if that comes through, right? So let's say in a month, if they do come to an agreement and we do get six-hundred-thousand more in that revenue, that could take the place of that last line, right? So it's a good way to do it. We didn't want to cut, assuming the governor's number, and start laying people off, and then get that six-hundred-thousand. You can't change the number once you've voted on it, once the board adopts it, which is tonight. So we made a strategic decision to add that with the understanding that we'll either get it back or we'll be cautious and conservative next year in our expenses. The top line is really the biggest thing we were talking about for the last two months, and, you know, I've said it here before, we didn't want, not want to have any budgetary trails, right? We didn't want to, we've had that, we've had some bad years where we were doing twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven of those. You know, there's been a few times, just in my time as superintendent, that we've had to do it. It's not great. It's one of the worst meetings you can have as an administrator. And so our goal this year was to not do that, and we're going to be able to do it, right? With those things. So there are times when you do it, and these are those kind of times, rather than Rather than lay people off, we'll figure it out with the reserves and make sure that we make good decisions going forward. So we were able to do that, we do have some cuts. Those cuts are changed a little bit since the last time. We talked about the retirement incentive that we tried for elementary teachers. It looks like we're gonna get no-takers on that, which is fine. But then going back to, you know, those first two lines there, four elementary and four co-teach, that was really eight elementary teachers. That's too many if we're not getting retirements from the elementary staff. So we changed that down to five, three sections, based on class sizes and reductions there. And then two of the co-teach, one of those is already unfilled. And so those five from eight, we were able to do that two ways. One was, we had a nurse retire, and Sacred Heart and Susan O'Duck closed, so we don't need that nurse position, so that was another attrition one, so that worked. And then breakage in salaries. We had eight retirements this year, four teachers, four TAs, that weren't part of the retirement incentive, but just, you know, normal retirements. And then you always hit some breakage in salaries. Somebody retires at the highest step, and you bring somebody in at a lower step. You save money for each one of those. So that was about $200,000 in savings. So with the nurse added, and the $200,000 with that salary, it made up for those three elementary teachers that we end up not cutting and keeping in there. And then with the $1.75, gives us that additional revenue. So that slide ends up lowering the draft two number to 142, 439, 843 in the middle of that page, which was our draft two budget. It lowers it by $79,000 with all of that taken into account. Gives us a final budget of 142 through 681. Remember, that includes the transfer of capital of that small city alderman. Any questions?
Josh, with the, obviously the attrition stuff that's going on, you were still very confident in the ability to make that up and the teachers we have and the staff that we have.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, students aren't taking...
Yeah, you're not talking about making up the money next year.
No, I'm just talking about just the work that the teachers are getting.
Yeah, so...
Can you just talk on that?
Yeah, let's talk a little bit more about it. So I'll go from the bottom. The nurse I just said, so the nurse that actually retired wasn't had to be that one, but it happens to be that one, was that Sacred Heart. So Sacred Heart and Susan O'Duck are closing. We have a half nurse go to each place. So that, that's an easy attrition. So that's not somebody losing their job, that's a nurse that's retiring and we don't have to fill it. So that's a full savings of that position. The three social workers, we're keeping those three social workers. That goes back to Tom's question, that's just a different funding source. The instructional coach, so this past year, there's only one year we did that, right? We had three? So we had three at School Two two years ago. This past year, we ended up taking that third one and splitting it between Two and Carroll Hill, because Carroll Hill got identified as a target school. So there were two in all our schools at the elementary level, and then Carroll Hill and School Two split a third one. And so that, one of those at Carroll Hill left us about a month ago. And so now they have the same as everybody else, they just all have two now. So we can do without that. And the two special ed's have been unfilled all year, right, Ms. Fitz? So that's not gonna hurt us if those are already unfilled. They were still in the budget, we were still trying to fill them, there's just nobody out there. So we'll continue to make do the way we've been. And then the co-teachers, I mean, you know how that co-teach position has worked, and it's worked great for us at the elementary. I mean, those principals will, you know, tell you how impactful that's been for kids. Remember, that's two teachers in a classroom, individual attention, targeted attention for all the students. So one of those is unfilled right now. The other one, as we lose, and that's just now you have one teacher, and our class sizes are really still pretty low. And then the other three are based on class sizes, and I said the last time, even those reductions, those particular classes that have reductions, still are 18 or below as a class. So it's a good question, but I think, I think we're in a good place. And again, none of those people, none of those positions are people who are losing their jobs. And that's the biggest part of that. Those are positions that are gonna go away, but everybody that's currently working in any of those is gonna still have a job.
Thank you.
Yep. Other question? That's the number that'll be on the agenda. Okay, oh, forgot that. So our public hearing will be May 7. And Matt, typically also we meet the candidates, but right now, the topic will have that going free for free. And then all the community meetings have been scheduled. Thank you, Teresa. There they all are, and that's on our agenda too, and it'll be on our website if people want to get a little...
I'll just say lastly, John and Adam, I mean, you guys worked this stuff without us, without numbers and the state budget, right? So just kudos to you guys for working magic and making sure that we can keep the teachers that we have, no layoffs, like, you guys did a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And go back to Matt's idea, we are doing that, we're working on a short video that we can put out for people that can't get to any of those things. Not gonna be able to, I'm working on it. Thank you.
Motion on the floor for approval, request our resolutions one and two.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion on the floor for approval of minutes from March 26, 2025.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent Recommendation, Human Resources, that matters. Under unclassified and classified, under unclassified, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one through seven.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under classified, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one through three. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under Superintendent Recommendation Programs, motion on the floor for approval of IO one as listed.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under Superintendent Recommendations, Business Finance, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one through three.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under Budget Vote and Election, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one and two.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Under Board Resolutions, motion on the floor for consent agenda items one and two.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? District Announcements, future BOB meetings, all meetings will take place here at the Middle School at 6:00 PM. On May 7th, we will have our town hall budget hearing. It says meet the candidates, but I'm not sure we're gonna do that. In our charter school public hearing meeting. And then on May 21st, we will have our meeting to certify the vote and our Troy Community School Brunt School presentation. You will see below in section two, we will be traveling to each of the elementary schools and high schools, talking with the PTO about the budget. So if anyone on the board would like to attend, please do so on those dates. Okay, under good news, we do have a couple of items. Troy High varsity golfers Peter Ryan, Joey Dugan, and Kane Bean helped officially open Fair Park Golf Course with the first drives of the day alongside Mayor Carmella Mantello past Wednesday. It was chilly, but a great start to represent Troy. This morning, School 16 held its annual Earth Day cleanup organized by the PTA. Fifth graders students kicked off the day by planting flowers and picking up litter around the school grounds. A big thank you to the PTA for their continued support and to our hard-working students for keeping their school looking great. And Troyers celebrate the arts exhibition opens tomorrow at the Arts Center of the Capitol Region. The community is invited to attend opening reception on Friday, April 25th from 5 to 7, featuring student awards and live music by Troy Middle School and Troy High School ensembles. The exhibition, which runs through May 14th, showcases outstanding visual performing arts from students at every school. Anyone else have, did you see one share?
You wanna call people like this?
Big Josh shit.
Big Josh shit a lot.
I'll just, may I?
Yes!
And that's the first day back after spring break. If you noticed, the work in the south block for the new tech wing has begun.
Oh, nice.
Mr. Monk and I were in conversation a couple of times today. No egregious parking issues, things went pretty smoothly. So that's good to hear that everyone did a nice check. That'll be open, that'll be for the next two months, and then it'll be opening in the fall of 20...
2016?
2016, yes.
That'd be good.
All right, so motion on the floor to re-enter into executive session for the purpose of conducting a grievance hearing pursuant to Article 15 of the CBA with UPSCU. Invited in will be Mrs. Liz Aaron, ready parent, Mr. Carmelo, Dr. Watson, Mr. Hotel, and Mr. Massey.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.